Go ahead and call the order of the regular meeting of the zoning commission for the town of Simsbury for Monday, December 16th. Tonight, alternates, we need one for Jerry Post and one for Kevin Gray. So you can sit for Kevin. Vaughn, you're it.
Yeah, all right.
You're the guy.
Okay.
All right, so Vaughn for Jerry. That'll be good. Looking at the minutes from the December 2nd meeting, I didn't see any need for any major edits.
One minor thing, Levetkin's name was misspelled in line 91.
91. Mark Levetkin's name was misspelled in line 91. Thank you, Dave. It's always reassuring to know someone is reading these very carefully. All right. So with that change correction, I would move the adoption of the minutes for the December 2nd meeting.
2nd.
Agenda item number four is the consent items. These are items that have been reviewed by the staff that generally comply with all the regulations or that we've discussed in detail. Do you want to go through them quickly, Hiram?
Sure.
Thank you.
The first one is an application to Dorset Crossing. It's a reapplication of a site plan that was previously approved. My staff's recommendation is that the site plan dated 6/2012 revised to 7/1713 is reapproved with the same conditions as contained in the original approval.
Okay.
Number two is an application of Edwards Associates, again to Dorset Crossing. East Point LLC suggested wording from staff at this time is site plan dated August 1, 2013 revised to November 25, 2013 is approved with the same conditions as contained in the original approval.
Okay.
Third one is application from the town of Simsbury for a greenhouse of the Simsbury community farm. That is an application for a 27948 greenhouse. Recommendation from staff is approved as submitted. Applicant is required to seek any and all proper building permits and may be required for the structure. There are no setback issues, no bulk issues with that. And then finally, the fourth application is for a sign at One Old Mill Lane. This property already has kind of an unusual situation. If you looked at the staff report on this one at all, unusual situation. And this was at previous approvals, not only a previous special exception, but also a variance from the zoning board, use variance from the zoning board of appeals years ago as well. So there's really nothing to say that the sign couldn't be there. The staff recommendation on this one is the application for the sign proposed for the property of One Old Mill is approved as to size and location, as submitted with the condition that the sign is to have no lighting unless approved by the design review board and zoning commission as part of a subsequent application. And just like to note that we did check with the applicant earlier today, and he has no problem with that.
Yeah. Let's let the minutes reflect that Kevin Gray arrived at 7:10 and will act as in his role as a regular member. So in terms of these items...
Could it just be clear, just for the minutes, so who is not seated now?
So Ned.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So these, the items number one and two, we talked about in detail two weeks ago and anticipated this, so really no issue with those. Number three, this is yet another similar greenhouse to the ones that we've previously approved, and it's completely conforming in all regards, setbacks and everything else.
Agriculture purposes and legal park.
And the only thing curious to me was that they got all these, went to these troubles over the last 30, 40 years for the sign and got all these approvals and they never put the sign up?
That's correct. But they run with the property.
It's about time. So I just need someone to move approval of these four consent items.
So move second.
So moved by Ryan, seconded by Fitz. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we will now open a public hearing. Ask Will to read the, do we have the call?
Hiram, do we have the call?
Yes, thank you. Got two o's on top of paper?
Okay, legal notice, town of Simsbury, zoning commission, regular meeting. Zoning commission of the town of Simsbury will hold a public hearing at a regular meeting to be held on Monday, December 16th, 2013 at 7:00 PM in the main meeting room, Simsbury Town Offices, 933 Hop Meadow Street, Simsbury, Connecticut, on the following. Application 1351 of Scott Hart, agent for Leonard and Amy Binsky, owners for a special exception pursuant to Article 7, Section C9 of the Simsbury zoning regulations for an accessory dwelling unit on the property located at 8 Beaver Brook Road, MAP B16, Block 301, Lot 016, Zone R40.
Go ahead and read the call.
I'll read the second as well. Application 13-52 of Dwight Miriam Robinson &amp; Cole LLP for Cureleaf LLC, applicant Grist Mill Partners LLC, owner for a special exception pursuant to Article 7, Section J2 of the Simsbury zoning regulations for a medical marijuana production facility on the property located at 100 Grist Mill Road, MAP G11, Block 103, Lot 005-25, Zone I2. At this hearing, interested persons may appear and be heard, and written communications will be received. Edward J. Povich, secretary.
Thank you. So we will take the first item first, application 1351, Scott Hart.
Eric.
Thank you. If you can come forward, I don't know what the microphone situation is here, but we prefer you can use the podium. Thank you.
Sorry, gotta say first, I don't exactly know what I'm doing. So I'm the owner of 8 Beaver Brook Road, and we're putting an accessory dwelling on our premises. This is Scott Hart, he's actually our contractor working on it. What do you need?
So I'll summarize for you, the dwelling itself and the proposed changes all fit within the regulations in terms of size, attachment, egress. There's an affidavit in the file that says that you're going to occupy it or not rent it, if it's only marginally relevant. There was one question asked about parking, where the cars will park, and I thought I saw that you were going to build a new garage next to it, or is that something you're thinking about doing?
The other garage, what we're going to take is the existing garage extended 12 feet, and that's going to be the accessory dwelling. We're going to do an additional garage on the opposite side of the building, a two-bay garage.
Okay. So that'll allow for the parking, and there'll be plenty of parking for whoever might...
Yeah, the existing driveway, yeah.
Okay. So that really is all we need in terms of the siding and the roofing, it's going to be similar to what's there?
It's going to be exact match, same manufacturer, same colors.
Any of the other commissioners have questions for the applicant? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this topic, or a guest? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you want to amend the agenda and take a motion? I think we should do that.
Will we amend the agenda and take a motion on the application we just heard?
Second. All in favor? Any discussion about the issue?
Mr. Chairman, just for record, the staff recommendation is the application does meet all the applicable regulations and could be approved as it's in compliance with the regulations that are adopted.
Thank you. So I just need a motion for approval?
Will we approve?
I'll second. Seconded by Morecki. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? So we'll return to the agenda, which is the second public hearing, application of Dwight D. Miriam for Robinson &amp; Cole for Cureleaf.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm Dwight Miriam, I'm a lawyer with Robinson &amp; Cole. We represent the applicant, Cureleaf LLC. You may recall that on October 22nd, this commission amended its regulations to enable an application for a special exception for this type of facility, which is a medical cannabis production. And as you'll see, really just kind of a research and development and testing, Armin and you, you're going to see a lot of detail of what's going to go on in the building, and the whole nature of the operation. We've tried to make our presentation a complete, comprehensive, detailed, and in order to expedite that, we have a PowerPoint which, if we're disciplined, will be done in 30 to 40 minutes. You're welcome to ask questions along the way, but if you don't ask questions, we'll be done in 30 or 40 minutes.
Okay.
And you'll have a complete picture of what's going on here, in all the detail we can provide without being too strenuous about it.
Right.
So I think the thing that may work best is if you sat in the second row...
We're going to come back over there, so we...
We had a little audiovisual challenge here earlier, so I'm going to have to stand by the machine. This way, I'll be able to, you can keep an eye on me, and we won't turn our back to the audience, which would be disrespectful, so...
You can turn off the center section a lot.
Well, I gotta, first I gotta get something over here. Oh, that's not right.
Yeah.
And then when you turn the computer, the image went off the screen. Is there enough connection?
Oh.
Wire?
Yeah, that'll do it. This is Lina McCaffrey, she follows me everywhere to keep me out of trouble, so one of our time use analysts.
Can you turn the lights off?
Yeah, we can turn just one part of the lights off here. This'll be better, this'll be better for you. You're not going to see too much of me tonight, but, of course, I haven't toggled, see if I can toggle this in a way that I can see it at the same time, without turning around. Maybe not. Yeah, but I don't have it on the screen here, it's what I want it to have, so I don't have to keep turning around. All right? You got a picture? I got a picture. This is a medical cannabis production facility. It's enabled by state statutes, state regulations. In your packet of materials, you have the statutes and regulations which govern this. The Department of Consumer Protection is in the process of picking just three production facilities. Our client is an applicant for one of these production facilities, and we've selected a site here at 100 Grist Mill, former corporate headquarters, going back some years, and I was involved in the original permitting. And now, since you've amended your regulations, this is pursuant to your amended regulations, as a special exception with site plan approval. And down here at the bottom, you see just the beginning of an excerpt from your regulations adopted on October 22nd, defining a medical marijuana producer, and then putting them with the conditions and terms and criteria of Article 10A3, which I'll summarize at the end of our presentation. Our presenters this evening are four, Eileen Konyakny, president, April Erasate, Bruce Colton, and Scott Heska. Anthony Taylor is here this evening, if you've got any specific questions about security, but I think in our overall presentation, you'll be, have all the detail you need. Our compliance officer is available if we need to reach him, I told you, you really didn't need the drive round trip from New Jersey for this. So here's Eileen's credentials, it's in the material. She's a registered nurse, more than 20 years of experience in oncology, and is president of Cureleaf LLC. She in fact, right here, wave, Eileen. Eileen in fact was, long before this LLC was formed, or even thought of, she was involved with the state as an advocate for statutes and regulations. Connecticut is the 20th, one of 20 states plus the District of Columbia, which enables medical cannabis to be produced in a pharmaceutical operation. And I've got to say, as somebody who's written a little bit on this, that there is no state that has done a better job than Connecticut in terms of preparing for this particular type of operation. April Erasate, back here, she'll be speaking, is the chief operating officer, she's a lawyer, lots of experience in this area, and you'll hear from her in some detail. Robert Bernbaum is overseas, he's the CEO, comes from an extensive financial background and helped pull this team together. This is a substantial project, even though the building remains unchanged, it's going to be the same as it is today. There's an investment of about a couple million dollars in equipment and some alterations to the building, including solar skylights and the like to bring light into the facility, rainwater capture, but then all of the equipment that comes with producing medical cannabis, then processing it into various forms that you'll see about, just like any pharmaceutical company, any other pharmaceutical company would do. This application to the Department of Consumer Protection is 665 single-spaced pages. And in going back through it, I decided I'd just pull out a couple of things for you to see. One of these was the objectives of what they want to accomplish in the first 24 months of operation here, to build an advanced cultivation and extraction facility, to keep pace with the demands as the dispensaries, we're not doing dispensary here in Simsbury, because the dispensaries are approved and developed, to do some educational work. We've had, for example, it's not part of this application, but we have met with law school and medical school here in Connecticut about teaming with us in a series of seminars and research projects as we begin to evolve the system in Connecticut. This project will also be funding research on this pharmaceutical drug, and has additional, as you'll hear some details, community benefit programs and the like. I pulled this little piece out of the application because I couldn't understand it at all. And the reason is just to show you a little excerpt of the level of technicality, if you will, that goes into this. As I said, this is essentially a small pharmaceutical manufacturing, production, research, testing, operation. And part of the application went through in pages and pages and pages of this level of detail to the Department of Consumer Protection, of the sort of activity that will be going on at this facility. Now here it is, you're doubtless familiar with the location. I'm going to take you on a little cruise up into the neighborhood, but this is the building. This is a thousand-foot radius around it. You come in off of West Street, I mean, you're all familiar with where it is, right? And here's a view, aerial view. You come in here where the pond is, oh, that's good, who's helping me here? Thank you, where the pond is, and come on in through the new housing development, and then on up this rather long road, which you'll see is, makes the site invisible from below. And then there's the building of about 40,000 square feet. Somebody asked me a few weeks ago, well, how far is this away from the high school? So I took a look, and it happens to be, just for your information, I scaled this, this is what happens when lawyers start doing scales, but 2,500 feet, those are 500-foot markers, a little more than a half a mile as the crow flies, so it's some distance from the high school. So here we are at the end of workway, the building itself, and here, I'm just going to take you, walk you around the building, if you haven't been up there in a while. Forty thousand, just over 40,000 square feet. I'm literally walking you around, counterclockwise around the building. So what I did is, Saturday morning, I went out just as the storm started, and I decided that one of the best things that we could do is do a drive-up. This runs a little less than two minutes. This is coming West Street towards the high school, you with me? And this is, and I obeyed all speed laws of the state of Connecticut, the town of Simsbury, while making this video. It's actually 20 or 25 miles an hour, but coming in here, swing off the street, this is what you'll see as you enter the site.
Who built that?
They're pretty terrific, there are just a couple of units still available, and the new construction from the county. All right, see now, we get down, this is workway on the left, we get down here to the end, I start to swing around, notice that our sign is still up there. And now here's what you see from the bottom, there are a couple of private property signs, we're going to have a little detail on that, but from down below, you really can't see anything until you get about halfway up the hill. Now the building starts to come into sight, but only after you get around the curve. So one of the things that makes the site really ideal in terms of repurposing this building, to put it back into full use. Come up here. And that's just inside where I am now, just inside where the gate will be, on the security fence which runs around the perimeter of the parking, as we'll explain. And head back down. Again, can't see any of the development below, until you get about halfway down the driveway here, now you begin to see the buildings peek through. I'm going to turn it over now to April and have her talk about operations at the site now that we've familiarized you with where it is. April, you can either stand there at the lectern if you wish.
Yeah, I'll just let you know. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Chairman, members of the zoning commission, thank you for your time and attention. I'll try to be brief. My name is April Erasate, as Dwight mentioned, I am an attorney in the state and have a background in pharmaceutical R&amp;D. I am chief operating officer of Cureleaf, and tonight I'm going to give you a brief overview of our operation. As I go over this material, just please keep in mind that at the end of the day, this is just essentially a pharmaceutical manufacturing company. I'll go through five areas, and then if you have any questions, I'll answer them, or I can turn you over, and I'll be here till the end. First, why this facility? Why do we choose this particular facility? What are the day-to-day operations that will be taking place inside the building? How much activity will the use generate? How have we mitigated any potential impacts? And finally, what makes us good neighbors? So first, why this facility? Because 100 Grist Mill was originally built for a high-tech manufacturer, it is currently equipped with a number of desirable characteristics for the manufacturer of medical-grade cannabis. For example, there are eight clean rooms, a 120-ton chiller, extensive sprinkler and fire response systems, surplus power, as well as an isolated location, which Dwight was, you could clearly see by the video, isolated location, limited access, low visibility. The clean rooms are perfectly suited for manufacture of an unadulterated medical-grade product. In addition, they add an extra layer of air scrubbing to completely eliminate any odor impacts. The chiller is ideal for removing some of the heat generated by the indoor cultivation process, and, I mean, I could go on, but in short, it's brilliantly designed for our use, we felt lucky to find it. The size of the facility is also ideal. We will be occupying the entire space for security purposes, with a Phase 1 buildout of about half of 40,000 square foot space. Phase 2 of the remainder of the space will be implemented when the patient demand requires it. Phase 2 can potentially double or triple our production capacity, but we do not, even if we triple production, we do not anticipate a substantial increase in activity, largely because the ultimate product is so small. So as far as, next slide. Day-to-day operations, the first step of this process, as you can guess, is cultivation, and this is the one that will occupy the majority of the space in the building. All the cultivation of the cannabis plant will take place indoors, this is mandated by the Connecticut regulations. Cureleaf will follow an organic cultivation protocol, meaning that we will not have any harsh pesticides or chemicals on site. Initially, we anticipate four to five full-time cultivation employees, supported by three consultants. At times of harvest, we expect to take on several more employees part-time to aid us through this process. The majority of cultivated plant material is then processed using a host of specialized machinery, protocols, these are designed to extract particular compounds that have been shown to have medicinal value. For example, we will have the capability to largely remove the psychoactive component from the plant in a process similar to that used to take caffeine and coffee. Once we've extracted the desired compounds, they will be formulated into capsules, tinctures, sublingual wafers, topicals, inhalers, any, a host of other familial forms of medicine. Therefore, the volume of the final product, as I said, is relatively small. Throughout the process, the products will be tested in-house, using high-pressure liquid chromatography, gas chromatography. It will then be packaged and set for delivery, and I will discuss delivery further in a few minutes. In total, we anticipate four to five full-time employees in these processing areas. The entire manufacturing process will be supported by an office and IT staff of about three to four persons. Go ahead, Dwight. The facility will be monitored 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, by two on-site unarmed security guards from a well-known security agency. The guards are just one part of a multifaceted security plan, which includes an alarm system, a key card system which limits access into the facility, as well as access between departments within the facility. We have outdoor surveillance, indoor surveillance, then we campus lighting, which we'll talk about in detail, and perimeter fencing, which we'll also go into in detail. Some of these elephants, elephants? Some elephants. Some elements of the security system are required by the state, but others are just the typical elements that you would find in any pharmaceutical manufacturer with a valuable product that has an interest in protecting that product and restricting access to these areas. Go ahead, Dwight. I think they're backwards. Just so you know, I have met with Chief Ingerson and Fire Marshal Kowalski, and have obtained a license for production. I intend to work hand-in-hand with both departments in tailoring and implementing the plan, as well as abiding by the specific requirements of both departments. In addition, both of these departments, I know this was a question that came up, will have emergency access to this facility. Because we are caring for living plants inside, there will always be at least one full-time cultivation staff person on site, and two guards, as I mentioned, will be on site 24/7, 365. Outside of that, all the other employees should be on site during normal business hours. So just to go over some of the totals, the total employees, including executives, will be about 20 in Phase 1, will be about 30 in Phase 2. In addition, all employees are subject to state-mandated background checks, and they must register with the state in order to work at a production facility. Total equipment costs, as Dwight went into briefly, are over $1 million. And we expect to process about, between 100 and 200 pounds of plant material initially per month, and produce a very small volume of medicines like capsules and ointments, with the total number of doses ultimately dictated by patient demand as it increases in the state. Go ahead, Dwight. So how much activity will this use generate? First of all, there will be no public access to this facility. There's no retail, it is not a dispensing location, access is limited to authorized employees, there are no unauthorized visitors permitted, and there will be no signage on the street, only a small sign on the building itself. As I mentioned, there will be 20 employees initially, with 10 more upon implementing Phase 2, so there will be the typical activity of employees coming and going, all during, largely during regular business hours. About 20, then there's probably... About 20, then there's product delivery. So as Dwight mentioned, the DCP expects to license only five dispensaries throughout the state initially, so we expect product to go out legally. It will be delivered in a small, unmarked vehicle, indistinguishable from other vehicles on the road. And upon the implementation of Phase Two, while the frequency of delivery may increase, we don't anticipate the necessity for a change in vehicle because the product again is self- Even at maximum capacity, we anticipate no more than four deliveries per week. Independent testing is mandated by the state, so some product will go out in these same vehicles at a similar frequency or less to be independently tested by the state at group labs. Innovation supply deliveries will be coming to the facility. They'll consist of your typical indoor gardening equipment, such as pots and nutrients. We locally source these items, so we expect that we deliver to typical trucks, gardening trucks. There won't be semi, tractor-trailers coming up work with. I would say once a week, and then because we grow in soil, maybe every two to three months we'll have a soil delivery which will come in a landscape truck or the like. Finally, we provide and launder pocketless scrubs for our employees, so we will refine our laundry service, and we anticipate them weekly in a van or such. And typical office supplies, paper, ink, those sorts of deliveries, and then UPS and FedEx. That's everything I could think of that will come through the facility. Go ahead, Dwight. So as far as mitigating and eliminating the potential impacts, you know, to eliminate potential off-site odor, we've gone above and beyond. We've hired experts in the field of odor elimination, and they have devised an air treatment system that focuses on activated carbon filtration. This is the best way to remove odor from air. We will treat this air on three levels. It will be treated in the cultivation room, it will be treated in the clean rooms, and finally, as it passes out of the facility. With multiple passes through the carbon filter and additionally air quality monitoring system inside and outside the facility, we can be sure that any exhaust leaving the building will be clean and odor-free. And just so you're aware, this plan and all of the equipment specs that go along with it were submitted as part of our application. We are, we have to hold those, we will. Diversion is a potential, possible problem, but we've addressed it at, not in depth, I would say. To eliminate the potential, we have a host of systems we have. The final product is housed in regulation-compliant, custom-built-in vaults. We have software that captures all activity around every gram and provides us with inventory reconciliation tools, so in essence, we can track every gram from seed to sale. We can track all the activity around every gram and locate it at any time. There's a host of other anti-diversion methods, but if you have any questions, I can go into that further later. Finally, just considering the controlled environment mandated by the regulations and the low visibility, the limited access to the facility, the low traffic, and the fact that there's no public access to the facility, there will be no negative impacts on the neighborhood or the community. Go ahead, Dwight. And finally, you know, it's been very important to our organization and to me personally to practice transparency and to establish open lines of communications with town officials, the town, anyone who will listen. We intend to be good neighbors, and we hope to be well-received. Our business plan includes a community benefits plan, an environmental plan, many parts to it, a substance abuse prevention plan, and we have marked a percentage of sales to support these plans. Our marketing plan is rooted in education and awareness, and we are pleased to accommodate and address any concerns and try to be easily accessible. In short, we seek to be active and beneficial additions to the community. On a personal note, I would like to share that I lost my mother to breast cancer in 2011. I lost my grandmother before her. And the potential applications of this medicine to that disease alone are incredible, not to mention the applications I've seen documented for MS, epilepsy, and other qualifying conditions. I know this isn't a hearing on the use of medical cannabis in general, and that some of you are already aware of the plant's potential, but I share this with you only to assure you that as a founder of Kira Leaf, I commit to you that our mission is to be a leader in the true medical model that Connecticut has made possible, and ultimately to simply provide patients with more options. So thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, I'll be here.
Thank you, April. All right. Bruce, you wanna stand here or there? You wanna run this slide?
I, there's only eight or so, so why don't I do the same pattern?
Okay, I'll do the Van and White again. I'm glad Paulie was fast there.
I, I think if you could discuss that. It's the fence, which is the third slide, but when we get to that slide, that's a product sample. Good evening. Bruce Colton, Hocktech, Coleman Hartman, Amist. Thank you for inviting us here. My job has been to advise the, my client, the applicant, in trying to understand and evaluate the existing building for the purposes that they have, and to advise on how that transition may be. Dwight, did you have, you didn't use my slide deck?
They're embedded in here.
Oh, I see, okay.
They go longer.
The, as April said, the existing building is amazingly well-suited, assuming in my opinion to their needs. It's, as she said, it's well-suited with the technologies that's there. The electrical service, for example, is sufficient to power the lighting, the considerable lighting load that will come to it. It's a single-story building, so everything happens and moves around in that, in that floor plate. It's a concrete floor plate. It's right-sized, and of course, the techno, the, the, the clean room technology that's there, all of it will allow this operation to get going relatively quickly, which is, I understand, a condition of the, of the license, to be able to, once granted, to be able to become a producer in a, in a few months, is what they're looking for, and this building satisfies that need. The site plan, the site, I had thought that they should call themselves Rock and Horse Enterprises, but that didn't fly, so. But the site really requires almost no change in order to be, to accomplish what Dwight has described. There's no addition to the building necessary. There's no change to the entries. The, we might not use all of them, but the entry that we propose using is there, the truck, delivery access and loading dock is there. There's no change to the paving. The paving that's there stays. It's neither reduced or increased accordingly. There's no change to the drainage potential, the catch basins, the water, how it's collected and where it's directed, no change to any of that. It's, again, very well-suited to a very fast moving forward. Do we have the building next to Dwight?
Presto.
This is how the building will be arranged. You can see that the, the Phase One is on this side here, and this is the Phase Two, which is yet to be determined. We have a little plan here, and just looking at it from a parking generation standpoint, the growing operation and everything related to the growing operation and processing, the manufacturing operation, let's call it, is this tone here. The office use is in this corner here. It's the, essentially the existing, we're not proposing to take many of those petitions down. And then the red is warehouse storage here. So in terms of parking generation, we see a certain amount of manufacturing, a certain amount of warehouse storage, and a certain amount of office use. And you, using your parking generation multiples, we get the total of around 83, 84 spaces, which is considerably less than 115 to the currently there. So that's the basis for that calculation, and this is a more detailed layout showing the tables. The existing toilets are used, the existing locker rooms, the existing clean room technologies and so forth, existing electrical rooms store deliveries and so forth. The big vault that April mentioned is there. Next. The, the simple significant change to what's there from a site standpoint is a security fence and security lighting. It runs around the perimeter of the paving, except in this location where it deviates to take in the turnaround here. There is a, a strong desire to have straight fence lines so that the camera surveillance is enabled more effectively, but that, the straight fence lines run down here close to the building. Here, of course, we can't, it's so straight, it's curved around. There's a single control point of entry here, the security gate that April mentioned. The, so that's the fence trajectory around the edge of the parking. Next slide, I think. This is the fence itself, the fence material. It's a 10-foot-high security fence. It's an anti-climb mesh, and the sample, I think, is passing around. And it's, we, we can get it in any color because we have just above the threshold order that will allow that choice. I would probably imagine that a dark forest green color would be the color that would merge mostly with the vegetated surrounds. So I think the fence can be made to largely disappear once you get a certain distance into the woods. Next. The lighting that goes with the fence is shown here. Purpose of the lighting, there's multiple purposes associated, but the main one is to provide a level of illumination that is satisfactory for the cameras, and the security cameras that are mounted on these poles here are slightly below the level of the lights. The lighting technology that we have in mind is quite advanced, it's this LED lighting technology, and you can see this rather unusual-looking lumina there. It's designed to generate a lighting spread, which is not at all the concentric circle-type lighting that you typically see. The lighting pattern is more like a sausage, and it runs along the fence line. So it's very contained, very directed, and quite shielded. The, this is the, 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 the level of illumination that we're talking about is, as required by the security consultants or company, is between 1.2, 1.3 lumens or foot candles and five. That's the range. It has to be reasonably tight because the cameras are sensitive to spread or lighting spread ratio. I brought my light meter with me this evening, and I went around, fortunately, it's winter time. If we were doing this in June, it would be a little more difficult, but I walked around, and the part of the place in town that I found the most exactly equivalent, equivalent to what we're talking about here is actually visible from that window over there. It's the light, it's the pathway between the road and the CVS store. And if you walk down that, which I did two times just to make sure I wasn't mistaken, the lighting spread there is almost exactly the lighting spread that we're talking about, or lighting intensity that we're talking about around the perimeter of this facility. So that's what two-foot candles plus or minus means, or two to five-foot candles. Below that would be the cameras, below that in the, in the lighting poles. The, the LED fixtures, as I said, are quite tight and directed, and if we look around the perimeter here, we see that on the southern boundary, we have the, perhaps we move to that next slide. Yes, here we go. This is the southern boundary, and here we have a, a facility which is very similar in nature. It's a security-conscious facility, so we don't anticipate that spread in this direction will be a problem. In this direction, here we have a hillock, and, which will, I have some site profiles next, which we'll show, which show that essentially from these positions down here, which are about 50, 40 or 50 feet lower than the building on the hilltop here. But this rise in the land itself shields, so we don't even necessarily depend on the foliage in this narrow quadrant here. So it's, it's this quadrant here, and in a, and in a slice down here that we are concerned about. And what we're concerned about is the spillage of light. Whereas these LED fixtures can contain it very well, the problem that we have to acknowledge and address is that the, particularly around here, that these buildings are about 50 feet below, and so they're looking up to a very slight degree under the light fixtures, so we need to be conscious of the screening. Fortunately, in this sensitive quadrant, we, you can see, here is the, here is the line of the fence that we're proposing, and here is the line of the property boundary. So there's, there's a fair amount of vegetation between the fence and, certainly between the fence and the above us, but most importantly, between the fence and property line that the applicant controls. And as you can see from the slide, a lot of this, this is a winter time slide, a lot of this vegetation is coniferous. In other words, it has a fairly high potential for screening. Some of this, this is no longer here, so it's not a fully accurate rendition, but it's pretty accurate. And so, as we move to the next slide, Dwight. These, this is the quadrant that we're most concerned about, and we have between here and here, and in this case, all along. This is the, this is the profile to the east, and this is the profile to the north. This is, this, this, the east profile here, which I believe is the top one, and then this one here is the, is the one below. This one, as we come to the northern side of the lot, there is actually a berm on the lot, so the, the landscape is working a little bit for us there. So we can, by planting smaller-scale vegetation along the top of that berm, we can, we can augment the screening capability of this existing vegetation. We don't really know how successful the understory, which is where the screening really needs to be, because the, the dense foliage at the top, which is where the sun is and everything, and that's where it's intense, but these trees grow to 50 feet, and then the lower limbs tend to atrophy a little. So we're more concerned about the shielding capacity of the understory. And so we are proposing to augment that where necessary with small, dense plantings. Arbividing was mentioned. There are some problems with arbividing, but it's that kind of a planting, spruces and so forth. We don't want something that'll get too big and then lose its understory. We want a plant that doesn't get too big, preserves its dense understory, and, and fits into the forested landscape. On some quadrants, that tree will need to be a little bigger. It doesn't have to be that big, actually. It just has to be able to stop that from being seen from the windows of these buildings. That seems to be the strategy that we would, that is perfect, and we would commit to doing that. It's hard for me to show a planting plan now because it really depends on how successful the existing understory is, and that's really not easy to tell until we're actually there. And so I think a general standard of, of screening in this manner would be, would be the way to expect to solve this problem completely. Next, I think, final. Oh, this is the other profiles, the one that I mentioned where the land just gets in the way. And then there's a, a condition up the driveway, which is more difficult, it's more difficult, it's, it's different in that the driveway itself, although it curves and bends, does represent a thinning, obviously, of the, of the forested landscape, and so we, on that narrow sector, we have to pay special attention as well. Next. And finally, the secure fence is secure only in as far as nobody can climb over it by climbing up a tree and dropping down on the other side. So there is a requirement which is standard in the security industry to clear about six or eight feet back from that fence, any substantial tree. We, on the site plan, you will see that we have identified where that thinning very precisely needs to be. We think there's 70 or so trees. It's about one every 15 or 20 feet around the perimeter. In some cases, no trees. In some cases, it's just thinning of the edges of the, of the trees. But it's, it is a- But it is a requirement, and we've looked at it pretty carefully. And it doesn't seem to be a major impediment to the screening that we were talking about because the screening that we are talking about will be outside that band in the vicinity of the fence. And I should say, by changing the parking which is currently here in this northern side mostly to a parallel park, we're able to bring the fence in. And that's because when you parallel park, there's not the sense that a vehicle is going to be driving up and just overshooting, gouging the fence down. Parallel parking is compatible with close proximity of fencing to the edge of the parking lot. So because we can do that with the parking need that we have, we can still get our 84 parking spaces by converting this to parallel parking around the perimeter. We've done that, that's what the site plan shows, and it allows us to put the fence right there rather than somewhere further up the hill. Dwight, I think that's just the...
Yeah, I just mentioned this. After we submitted the application, we had conversations with some people, and they made a couple of suggestions to us which were good. So we're happy to add them. One of them is that apparently these birch trees were wiped out in a storm, and there's some desire to have them replaced, so we've agreed with the property owner to put those trees in place after we get occupancy of the building, which will solve something that's been an issue for some people for a while there. There are private property signs, you saw in the little video, but they're little signs. And we want to do everything we can to discourage anybody from coming up workway. So even though it's got these two signs down there where those orange dots are at workway, the good idea, give it to us, and we're always open to good ideas, and you've got more of a detail in this, is now we can see those two like little blocks at workway. Unfortunately, you can't read from the scan, the red, but what we want to do is a couple of things. We're going to put in, this is a little more detail, we propose to put in at the entrance here to cut the asphalt and put in a cobblestone or paper block or something that clearly distinguishes as separate from everything else. So somebody coming there will go, oh, wait a minute. And put in some masonry pylons on each side with a sign in the middle of the pier that says "private property." And I think that, we believe that that'll catch the attention of anybody who really doesn't belong going up workway to this facility, to understand that it is a private place and they're not to go up there. So that's something we'd like to do, and we'd welcome a condition on the approval that this installation be made. So now I turn to Scott Hesketh, and when he's done, I'm going to wrap up on your regulations. Talk a little bit about it.
Thank you, Dwight. My name is Scott Hesketh. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut. I'm a partner in the firm of F.A. Hesketh and Associates, and our office is at East Grand B, Connecticut. I'm the author of a traffic statement dated December 10, 2013, that's been submitted in support of this application. We were asked to provide to the commission an estimate of the trip generation potential of the existing site and compare that to the trip generation potential of the proposed facility. Our findings are outlined in the letter that has been submitted. The existing site was approved by the planning commission in March of 1989. Although the approval does not specify a specific use, we could... The facility is likely a office space or a research and development space. If you look at the existing facility with the clean rooms and such, it's probably a research and development facility. The existing building is approximately 40,000 square feet of floor area. The proposed use is for manufacturing, could also be considered an industrial use if the commission so desires. The facility will be developed in two phases. The first phase consists of approximately 22,000 square feet of floor area and 20 employees. And the second phase will consist of the entirety of the building and the potential of perhaps 35 employees. Included in our traffic statement is Table 1, which presents a summary of the trip generation of the facility. Trip generation was based on the existing building use as well as the proposed building use, and based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers' Trip Generation Report, which is a standard engineering reference which is used by planners and engineers to generate trip generation for both facilities. And the data in that report is based on counts collected at existing operating facilities. The existing facility has a trip generation potential of about 656 trips on a daily basis with peak hour volumes of 92 trips or 123 trips if it was considered an office facility. If the existing facility was considered research and development, it would have a trip generation of 471 trips on a daily basis and peak hour trips of 59 and 62 trips during peak hours. The proposed facility, again, is 22,000 square feet during Phase 1 with a total of approximately 20 employees. For the purposes of our analysis, we considered it to be either an industrial or a manufacturing use. Based on those land uses, the proposed facility has a trip generation potential of about 281 trips on a daily basis with 20 or 21 trips during the afternoon peak hours, so a significant decrease. When the entire building is used, the trip generation potential would be approximately 307 trips on a daily basis with peak hours of 37 and 39 trips respectively. It's our opinion, based on the proposed use, that the facility should be considered a research and development facility for the purposes of trip generation. And the trip generation should likely be based on the 20 or 35 employees rather than the size of the facility. However, if the existing facility is considered research and development, and the proposed facility is research and development, then at worst case, there would be no trip generation change whatsoever between the existing use and the proposed use should it be approved. If we base the proposed facility on the number of employees, there would be a substantial decrease in trip generation as a result of this proposal. As you've heard, the number of deliveries to and from the facility will be minimal. The number of trucks proposed at the facility is minimal. Most of the traffic to and from the facility is residential-type traffic. So it's our opinion that should this commission decide to approve this application, that there will be, at worst, no change in the trip generation potential, and at best, a significant reduction in trip generation based on the intended use. At this time, I'll turn it back over to Dwight Barron to close our presentation. Thank you much.
We agree entirely with what Scott has to say, of course, but when I look at this, you know what I think of is that if this use of 20 to 30 or 35 employees spread over 24/7, because remember, a couple of them are there 24/7, the cultivator has to have somebody there, you have to have somebody there on duty 24 hours a day. Spread that over the day, and then think of this building, what would happen if this building of 40,000 square feet got converted to pure office? What do people consume in office space today? At the most, 250 square feet, more like 200, and going down to as low as 100, I read recently. So if you had 40,000 square feet, you'd have 200 employees, and they'd be coming there at the peak hour of the morning, peak hour in the afternoon. Would not be a good use for the surrounding residential development that's aberd. That's what, in terms of traffic impact, makes this practically a perfect use. The only thing that might be better is some storage that you only came to once a month. And speaking of once a month, I just would like to put in context the low level of activity in this building. April and I were talking about, she said, 100 to 200 pounds a month. I went and took a look. You know what a bushel of potatoes weighs? 50 pounds. The production in this facility in Phase 1 will be about the equivalent in weight of a half a bushel of potatoes a week. And in case of volume, the normal form that cannabis is kept, April and I computed that it would be the equivalent of an 8 1/2 by 11 sheet of paper about three feet high a week. That's it. So it's really a very small, in that sense, a small-scale operation. And you saw bits and pieces of the typical product. It comes out in capsules, ointments, and a vaporizer, for example, is another way of administering it. It is a pharmaceutical operation. So here's your regulations, because you pull this under these criteria, if you recall what you did. I know you do, on October 22nd. So let me quickly go through them. First, need for the proposed use. This facility, these curaleaf look all over the state. They could go anywhere. This is the most ideal building ever. That's why I think we stand a very good chance of being selected as one of the three producers by the Department of Consumer Protection. Building is perfect. It's readily repurposed for this use. It's centrally located in the state for distribution, it's properly zoned for the use. Second, character of the neighborhood. It's really analogous to the prior use, which had a level of security with it and other operations. It is a research and development activity as well as manufacturing. It's not visible, and there'll be very little change in the site itself. Location of main accessory buildings, well, nothing's changed. Height and bulk of buildings, nothing changed. It's compatible with all the others in the vicinity, and you saw the aerial photo adjacent to this is another fenced facility similar in nature in terms of the level of security associated with it. Traffic circulation, circulation on the site doesn't change. All the parking requirements are met, even though we're reducing some of the parking. 84 parking spaces for 20 to 30 employees, that's more parking than they could possibly use. And as Scott said, and I reiterated, in terms of traffic impact, I can't think of a better use for this building. Got water, sewer, stormwater, all that's unchanged, available and adequate. Display signs, lighting, loading zones, and landscaping. We consulted with Mark Loffler, a tellier in New Haven, who's the top lighting person I know. I brought him in a very difficult manner down at Woodbridge, and he quickly straightened it out. We've given you a very detailed map of where the light is and isn't. We spent more time telling you about lighting than I think we necessarily needed to do. And I'll just tell you, I think that this is a little more art than science. I think what we need to do is get the Department of Consumer Protection to approve this site, go into the building, install the fencing and the lighting, and take a look at it. I think the best thing that you could do, that we would like to do, is put a condition on the approval that says, after you install the lighting, let's notice all the neighbors around there, and let's come back in and see if we have to add more planting or change the lighting if we have a problem. I don't think we're going to have a problem with that low level of illumination and the screening that's already there. We'll be doing interplanting, but I don't think this should be the end of the conversation about lighting. I think we should wait till we get it installed, invite everybody to take a look at it, come back, and make whatever adjustments needed to be done. I think that's a responsible way to do it. And I think we ought to have those entry features which will discourage people from wandering up there that don't belong there. Protection for the neighborhood, as you saw in the video, it's really not visible until you get halfway up in the site. Security fence, I think, looks a lot better than a cyclone chain link fence, practically. And we can get it, as I guess we said, in a color that's really going to be quite attractive. No large trucks, they're all, any truck that comes up there is going to be a van or a straight body. And no hazardous products. Can't be. This is a pharmaceutical operation designed to make medicine. So that's where we are. I didn't time myself. How do we do? Anybody watching their clock? So let me turn lights back on, and we'll answer any questions that you have. It's important to us that we get back to the Department of Consumer Protection with what you're going to let us do just as soon as we can. And so we went out of our way to make this a very complete application for what is essentially just reusing an existing building in a small manufacturing, research, development, and testing operation. So thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Let me just start with questions from the commission directly to Mr. Miriam, and are any of the other presenters?
I've got a couple of questions. Ownership of the building, do you intend to buy it? Are you just going to lease it, or lease with option to buy at some point?
Yeah.
It's a lease option to buy.
And is there any proposed legislation or legislation in place that says you can't have a dispensary at the same place that you're cultivating?
There are actually two separate licenses, so even if we got this license, that doesn't, we could never dispense, it's two separate...
You can never have two together?
Well, you can have them together, you could go for two licenses, some groups have done that, but they're two separate licenses, so if we got this license, it doesn't give us a dispensary.
They would need a separate, special exemption.
There are all the dispensary licenses.
We would have to prove it.
Dispensary applications are all in, the deadline was November 14th. We didn't have one for co-location, it's not going here.
But our regulations, the special exemption is for one or the other, so if you were to do down the road, want both in the same place, you'd need to, you'd have to come back and get a special exemption.
It's not a good location for dispensing.
For all the reasons that you'd like it for the other.
I mean, the dispensary locations that are most desirable are ones where there's a high concentration of population. So, you know, we've seen them down in applications in Bridgeport, New Haven, and down in Fairfield County, but I guess one in Norwich, but not, just not a good location, so not going to have one.
It would seem for this to be successful. The cost of production and that kind of thing would be important, and how do you know that you can be competitive with the other facilities? Do you have to be?
Well, I mean, you know, in putting in the application, we had to run all these numbers, and we had to submit our pro forma, and, you know, almost everybody has the same costs at the outset because it's mandated by the regulations. A lot of the security is mandated, a lot of the equipment costs, and the lighting is expensive. A lot of the locations are, it's expensive in general, but according to our pro forma, it will work out. You know, it's a valid, viable business plan.
What the state of Connecticut did, just to give you an example of how different we are here in Connecticut than other places, five dispensaries. Just, I'll get back to your question on production here in a minute. Five dispensaries statewide, that's it. The city of Los Angeles has 1,400 dispensaries. They would like to get down to 70. It looks like they might be able to get down to 140 based on vested rights, probably somebody pounding on the table screaming vested rights in front of this commission or place or nothing. So what the Department of Consumer Protection did, which was so brilliant, was to make a highly constrained market of both the dispensaries and the production facilities. There are 1,600 people, I guess, right now that are approved, and that's the beginning of it. So it might be two or three times that when it reaches a steady state, with 100-something doctors approved to prescribe. And so with only three production facilities, those three production facilities will be competitive in the sense that there's a very constrained market for production. So they're bound to succeed. If anything, what's going to happen here is a facility like this, the advantage of this facility is it has the built-in expansion potential if the market increases, so.
But you have other states that have competitive facilities.
But they can't, you can't transport across state lines because it's a schedule... See, what happened was...
Is that going to hold true?
If I could take just a minute to explain how we got in this situation as a matter of public policy. Cannabis is a Schedule I drug under the Controlled Substances Act of the federal government. There is no will in the federal government, just because of the way that politics have lined up, to move cannabis from Schedule I, which is completely controlled, into Schedule II, which is like where oxytocin, codeine, and other controlled substances are. So the only... So, the only way that medical cannabis can be produced, it has to be produced and used within each separate state or the district of Columbia. And the federal government is not going to change. They're not going to want the Schedule I because of the politics of some people that are just not interested in doing it. So, that's why Eric Holder Jr., the Attorney General, the end of August, the summer, said basically, as I mentioned in the October meeting, you know, it's going to be trust but verified. We're going to let the states, as a matter of federalism, run their own systems, make sure that medical cannabis is properly produced, tested, dispensed through systems. And if they don't do it right, the federal government's going to step in. Connecticut has done it so right thus far. But that's the problem. You can't move across state line. Has to be produced and consumed within the state.
Right. And just to add to that, you know, the intention is that should it become federally legal or they move it to a Schedule II, what the product we're trying to create is quality driven. We're trying to actually move this into the pharmaceutical realm, not just churn out cannabis. So, by the time the federal government moves it, we will have a product that is, you know, so engineered and so with our RMD and all of the experts that we're bringing in on our advisory board, that's so engineered that we've got now a medicine that is desirable regardless of how or where it's being produced.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One question. In addition to any of the tinctures or pills or wafers or products that you generate, would any of the leaf or plant be distributed out of your facility?
There will be plant material initially distributed. We're trying to get away from smoking. The reason that there is still plant material going out is because to date, it still remains a good way for patients to self titrate. And that is to say, this is enough, it's the fastest, the mechanism is the fastest through your lungs where you feel the effects immediately. So, there will be some initially, but we are, even that, we are moving to an oil which can be vaporized so that you still get that self, that initial self titration benefit without the products of combustion.
What would you say the ratio would be of plant distribution at first to product?
We really haven't specified. I would say.
I think that that's patient driven.
Yeah, patient driven.
And right now in the beginning, it's probably going to be about 50/50. But we truly intend that to be about 10 to 90.
This is.
That really is.
I understand.
Right. That is the idea.
To phase it out and provide it for people who aren't comfortable smoking at any pharmaceutical company.
Right. The whole premise of it is that there are a lot of patients out there that are afraid of it across the board regardless of who says it's good or whatever. And nobody believes that smoking is a good way to medicate across the board. So, we really are trying to put this into a delivery method and system where your grandmother is going to be like, oh, okay, I'll try that. That's where we're going.
So, a follow-up to that would be, how are you handling your waste in terms of any plant by product and how it's removed from the site?
It's actually regulated by the Department of Consumer Protection. So, you have to, you have to with their, they'll either send the representative or the commissioner himself, and you have to render it unusable, which that can be by pouring a solvent over it or something.
We're hoping to compost it.
It's tightly monitored.
We are. We're going to be, it's going to be, we plan on growing in soil. So, we're hoping that we'll be able to, you know, with the help of the DCP, be able to compost this damage.
But it is, it's totally regulated.
And so, you're not using any chemicals that need to be monitored by the DDP or any?
No, there will be typical, I'm sure some of the nutrients or even cleaning products fall on the list that when I was talking to Fire Marshal Kowalski, there's certain lists that need to be kept as to what we have on site. So, that will be listed with the.
But in terms of like extracting the psychotic attributes of the drug itself, there's no chemicals that are, that need to be specially handled?
Yeah.
One last question. The packaging for the plant material, not these, I understand the other stuff, but you talked about the paper three feet tall. What does that package do and how is that distributed?
That, what does the package look like? It's required by the department and the regulations as well that everything that leaves is packaged. So, it can't be opened before the patient has it. It's opaque, it can't be see-through, it's child resistant, it has to comply with all the semi-drug packaging rules and requirements. So, I would anticipate, I mean, we have put in either pill containers.
It'll be in a, depending on the quantity.
Okay. The soil, you said you're bringing in soil, which means you need to take soil out too, apparently, unless you're just cleaning the soil. Is it the same trucks and how does that process work? Like you're just exchanging soils?
I would assume you probably.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that that'll work out that way.
I do know you have to bake it, you have, or you have to, there's a process to sterilize it to get out so that we don't contaminate any other, but it will be the same company.
Do you do the same coming in too? You have to sterilize it coming in?
No, it comes in, you can order it how you want it.
Okay.
Some of it even come with particular nutrients. I mean, there's a whole host of industry that has cropped up around this with particular nutrients that are relevant to zones, particular.
Ned?
Hi. I'm concerned about the lights. We're sitting on the top of the hill. We've got a lot of very bright lights to make the cameras work. I assume they're dawn lights?
Yes.
Okay. We have a, I don't know if it's the right way to say it, but we've got an old people's home down at the foot of the mountain. We have 10 or 15 people that live with 100 and so feet of the property line. We have a new development that went in down the west. It may seem like it's out in the woods, but it seems you've got a lot of neighbors. And I'm just wondering, you have a lot of more parking space than you need. Is there any way you can move the fence in to alleviate some of the, the site, as I recall, the parking lot is much lower than the land around.
It's got a berm around it, but you do have a parking requirement. You know, we don't need all those spaces, but moving the fence in, Bruce, you should comment on this, moving the fence in doesn't resolve the issue that you're concerned about. I would not characterize it as high level of lighting. This is relatively low lighting. As Bruce said, you could look out the window here and see what it looks like.
Yes, it's controlled and that's why I took some time with my light meter and if you like, I think I read these things accurately and I did, and that's the level over there. It's similar out here too along the driveway except where you get that very bright light at the crosswalk, which goes up to around six or seven of candles. But the thing is that we've got, you've got 100 feet to 150 feet or more of woods between the lighting. I did think we could bring the lighting, the lighting into the parking lot at one stage, but the sweet spot was bringing it right up to the edge of the parking and shifting that parking around to be parallel. And that got it significantly down from the, in some places from higher on the rise down to the bottom so that we could put our planting, screening plantings on the top of that rise. We've got 100 feet at least and more, 200 in some places of vegetated woodlands that the applicant controls. I mean, that's the key thing. So, we can boost that.
Vegetation going like this.
Oh, I think you've misunderstood the geometry here. It's, when you stand, when you stand at a hilltop and you look down, it's sometimes, particularly if you've got skis under you, it feels like it's really steep down there. But when you do a profile and you find that it's 50 feet in elevational difference over 200 or 250, that site angle is actually not that steep. I mean, actually, in terms of, it's significant, we have to pay attention to it, but it's controllable because this is, this is, this is an accurately scaled drawing. And so, if we put trees, the lights are at 20 feet. If we put trees at 20 feet high just inside the lights, we can create a buffer that will screen that. But my concern is because we're lower down, we have to pay attention to the lower level branches on the trees. So, that means we have to be a little careful about the trees.
But you see you throw abracadis out, which would work fine in that direction because they seem to grow from the ground straight up.
Yes, I thought.
Of course, you can't limit their height. They don't keep growing.
Well, they don't. We would, we would agree on a mixture of dense, low plantings that would do the job. And I think planting arrangements on the north side might be a little, might be some slightly different tree plantings that we would specify as we move around to the east where that berm isn't.
See, I like the third one you have down there.
Where there's a hill.
Where there's dirt.
Yes, yes, that would be good.
Let me ask you this, if you're, I'm more concerned with the north side. If I'm across Maple Court on West Street, those houses are up on, they're higher up. If I'm across that old berm, and we just talked about Coburn and Meredith, they're on Old Mill Lane, if I'm sitting on my porch up there, what kind of a view am I going to have? Yeah. Are those people going to be affected? Because I think the people who are low aren't going to be affected. I think it's those folks, if it was anybody, right?
Let me just back up and reiterate a couple of things. One, this is relatively low level of lighting. Number two, we've got a new type of luminaire LED fixture, which is highly directed towards the grass. I think the concern would be, could you, could you see the light by looking up underneath it, which was the same problem that Telia and Mark Lauffler and I saw in another setting?
Sure.
There's a long distance here. The next thing is that until we get in and actually install the fence and the luminaires and take a look at all that, it wouldn't make a lot of sense for us to give you every single plant where it might go. I could think, I'm not going to say where they are, you could imagine what ones I'm thinking about. We made three mistakes in this town, and I live in this town, as you know. And there are three sites in this town where we have really bad lighting, okay? You try to think which three I'm thinking about. And you didn't get a second bite at the apple. You're not going to have, first of all, this lighting is the best that we can do. Second, I want to come back here after we install the luminaires and I want to invite all the neighbors and I want to have a conversation and I want to commit to going back.
We probably will take you up.
Yeah. I don't have to beg you to take me up. These are the cases you didn't get a second bite at that apple.
What's that?
Just a quick gesture. I live on 90 West Street. Just out of.
You have to come around getting the camera.
No, I'm not going to get the camera. Anyways, with the new condos going up across the street from us, there's no way we're going to see the lights in Maple Court.
Okay. All right. We need to be aware of time, you know, because this is a public area. Ned, go ahead.
The fence is 10 feet high?
Yes.
And how much, how high above the fence are the lights?
Lights will be at 18 to 20, so 8 to 10 feet above the height of the fence.
Is that necessary to be that high?
Yes. It's necessary to make the security system, it's a balance. And because, because I know we can control the spillage at that level with the strategies that we've described, I personally wouldn't advise my clients to lower them and I would, by demonstration if necessary, prove to you that it's a problem that we can manage.
The other question I had, the present building, the last time I saw it, had a lot of the walls were glass in your production area here. Is there some intention to change that to brick?
Yes.
Well, we could do that.
Or there would be office.
Or we can just build an opaque infill on the inside of the glass.
One way or another, whether it's fresh or not, we've discussed the fact that those will, either it would be an office right there on the exterior or it would be blocked from view. So, there would be no way.
The interior of the windows would be blocked in a way that you wouldn't see that they were blocked, but the outline from outside would be visible, so you would not know what's going on inside the facility.
As part of our security agenda as well, it's just not conducive to security.
We don't want to change the exterior. We're not going to change the exterior appearance of the building. Glazing stays where it is. But maybe block these panels inside, which will read from the outside as if the windows were there.
As if the windows were there anyway.
We looked at the alternative, decided it was much better to leave all the glazing. If the building ever got repurposed to something else, they're going to want the windows there anyway.
Okay. Dave?
Just a side, what about the alternative of infrared lighting? What, it seems like that would be a, I don't want to redesign your thing.
What was it to set out?
It's not feasible in the eyes of the security consultants and what is considered to be the conventional requirement.
We have two, Derek, I really want to open this up to the public, so. That's fine. I'm curious about your sister building, I guess to the south. Are there any access points, driveways, et cetera, either for emergency purposes or otherwise, that the fence affects this building here?
No, there's a single control point of entry. That's it. None, no more.
But this, this other road was in fact, at one time, designed to be a second way in for emergency vehicles, correct? Where does this building have access? Does it access Hattman?
Yes.
You have the dentist's office.
This building, there's a road that comes, yes, right down here. I think you can see it right there.
Okay. And then it doesn't connect up here at all?
There's a, there's, their gate is here.
So, they have a gate? Okay.
They have and we.
So, it's not necessary or advisable that there be another way in for, that's a question for Hyrum actually.
Two means of access.
The answer means it doesn't, they don't need a second access.
Police and fire both looked at that. We talked about that.
Okay. All right. One last question regarding the.
You're killing me.
Was there discussion about a turnaround for cars who end up driving in and, you know, don't need to do a K-turn or whatever to turn around and is that happening? What's going on?
You'll see a turnaround on the site plan. It's a little hard to read. We spent a lot of time looking at that issue and we ended up doing a single pullout for a K-turn with a straight body vehicle. And we looked at the risk of an articulated trailer truck coming up there. We think the risk is so low, nobody's, they're going to be out of their mind if they come up there. So, we could have designed for an articulated truck, we intentionally did not.
It's a wide enough street where it seems like they could just back straight out or, you know.
That's exactly what we said.
There aren't very many cars that go down that road anyway.
But you have every high school kid in town pulling up to the front.
Yeah.
So, we added that to the site plan. It's on the one.
We also have 24/7/365 someone there that could open the gate if there was an issue or something, so.
So, it'd be a man gate? Okay. Okay. I would like to offer the opportunity for anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to this topic. So, please come up and state your name and address.
My name is Ron Genesco. With me is Chris Nelson, my business partner, Northland Land Works Development. We have an office at 75 West Street and we recently developed the Millcom apartments and now working on the Millcom Crossing Town Homes. And the applicant has been very cooperative in reaching out to us to talk about many of these issues. And my only questions slash comment is, I think the more that you can make it very evident as you come up workway, that this is a private facility, so to the point of tractor trailers, 30, 40 feet up the driveways, some kind of sign that says, you know, tractor trailers back up here. It is a good place to make a K-turn. You get to the end, you mistakenly take a left, you back straight up into our entry and then you can take off. And then also the K-turn currently on that site plan is shown on the north side where there is that berm that the consultants mentioned as being a good buffer between the neighborhood and the facility. So, if it's possible for that to relocate to the southern side of the entrance drive, because I do think you're going to get tourists that are kind of lost and they go up there to see what is that all about? And they want to turn around and instead of jockeying back and forth, the K-turn is a great idea. But I think on the southern side might cause less disturbance to the existing natural buffer.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that's quite necessary.
Okay. Anyone else?
Anyone else? Thank you for your presentation. I guess I would like to either entertain a motion to close the public hearing or have discussion about that.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
One second, Hiram.
Second.
All right. Any discussion relative to closing the public hearing?
Is there any reason why we should keep it open, Hiram?
The commission has answered, asked all its questions. I don't think so.
Yeah, I'll just make a comment. I think that the only real reason that you might want to keep it open would be to have greater participation perhaps from the community that hasn't come to any of the three meetings we've had relative to this topic, which either suggests that, I won't say I'm not, but that, that the interest is there and, and there isn't a great strong resistance, or is it they just choose to come. I think we would do the applicant a disservice and ourselves a disservice by holding it open even really just to encourage that without asking them to again do the entire presentation so that anyone that was not here tonight to see this or see this information wouldn't have that back. So I really think that we, it was a very complete and helpful presentation. So I'm in support of closing the public hearing. So all in favor? Aye. opposed? All right. The question, the public has access to the presentation. Is that correct?
Correct.
So the, the other, we, therefore, with the public hearing closed, we could move to approve the special exception. So we'd be looking for a motion.
Before you do that, Rob, I'm wondering how we fit in the discussion about going out to the site and looking at the lighting and everything. I mean.
So that would be in a motion. That would, so if someone wanted to make a motion and incorporate all of the suggestions, and we want to be sure we have a comprehensive.
Well, such that we might be able to reduce some of the lighting if possible, rather than them coming back and saying, oh, they can't.
I, I think we absolutely should take advantage of this, because I think this will be a work in process.
I have some suggestions along those lines, too, so whenever you're ready.
Do we have a, a bond or something that would be in place to?
Why don't we ask, relative to the, the lighting, you mean?
Yeah, any changes in the lighting.
Not sure how that would work, actually.
Well, I don't suggest that. I think that, I think that you can work under the approval if you decide to go that way, with the safeguards that you're talking about, that bonding.
What were your suggestions, Hiram? Ready?
Yeah.
First of all, the applicant a permit and, of course, and/or permit to incite operation to be implemented, used, and maintained in complete accordance with all applicable Connecticut statutes and regulations. Number two, operations should be implemented, shall be implemented, and operated in close coordination with the Simsbury Police Department and Fire Department. Number three, operations shall be implemented and operated at all times in compliance with all aspects of the special exception standards in the Simsbury zoning regulations. Number four, special exception approvals are granted specifically and solely to the applicant Curly. Any proposed proposal to transfer the operation's ownership shall be made known to the town. Number five, any transfer in the ownership of the property or the operation shall be subject to the approval of the commission solely in order to ensure the adequacy of the operation to comply with all aspects of the local regulations, to ensure the continued compliance with all aspects of the original commitments and submission materials, to ensure the public health, safety, and welfare as envisioned in the Simsbury zoning regulations. Number six, continued department coordination as to building code requirements, drainage revisions, and any of the continued communications with land use departments in order to determine any valid concerns of abutting property owners, such as traffic and lighting and other issues and odor issues with those reference conditions the commission would recommend.
Question on your recommendation.
In terms of transfer of property, is that under the assumption that Curly ends up owning the property, or is the landlord of the property here to find out his responsibility? Should he still be the owner?
The only thing I suggested there is that the town be, be made known to the town. I really don't want the commission to get into any kind of, you know, difficulty with any potential transfer. The idea there is simply to say that the representations that have been made to the commission to date, the presentation that's been made by Curly, should be the ones that it's approved under and continued to operate under. That's, that's really the only intent here. Thank you.
Can we, can we approve this subject to Curly being the only operator?
Special exception, and it's granted to that applicant.
It doesn't go with the property? I thought it went with the property.
It does, but all I'm saying is that if it should transfer, that it would be made known to us. Simply, it's like another special exception for accessory apartment, where you simply want the transfers, the ownership transfers, or something the commission's made aware of of the transfer. It's not to preclude it, not to cause a problem with it.
Have you signed a lease on this apartment?
I'd have been.
How long is the term? Can you share the lease? And so that just brings us then to this, do we, do we think that that covers the, we'll figure this lighting thing out once we?
Yeah, I think the, the last one talks about the lighting, and certainly would be more than happy to take the applicant up if any valid concerns from any of the neighbors come up with regard to, to lighting, traffic, or odor issues, then we ask them to come back and talk about it.
Shouldn't there be a time limit on that?
Why would you want to do that, Dave?
Well, four years, four and a half years from now, who knows what's going on? Somebody comes up and says, hey, you guys, why don't you come here and talk about this, you know, for some nuisance reason.
Well, that's why I said valid. I think that the staff, the zoning enforcement, code of compliance people would have to go out with the light meters, whatever.
They're better.
Take a look at it. We, we deal with complaints every single day. We have to determine whether they're valid or not. If they're valid, we bring them to you. If they're not, we talk to them.
All right, so we, I'm looking, still looking for a motion, I think.
Can we propose Hiram's motion?
That's exactly what I was. Do that all into the, whatever.
I propose Hiram's motion.
And do we want to do something with the K-turn thing? Is that acceptable?
Yeah, can we, can we suggest that, that, that we will approve her with the K-turn on either side, but with a strong preference to the south side? If that can make it work?
I see the reason why we wouldn't, I wouldn't argue with that.
All right, so that's the seventh item on Hiram's. So I have a, a motion. I'll wait for a second.
I'll second.
All right. Any other further discussion?
Yes.
All right.
Some comments to make.
Thank you.
A few years ago, I took my daughter to see a large university in Philadelphia. And in the tour, we were, walked along the campus and made, it was made known that at any given point, as you're walking through the campus, there were three blue security lights that you could see. From any, any position, you would see three different security lights. Those lights were on poles, which when touched meant that cameras would focus on you. You'd be seen by security guards, who would be there within less than sixty seconds. The intent of this was to make the people who were taking the tour, probably more often their parents, feel secure about the security features that were available on the campus. It did the opposite for my daughters, why do I need to have this level of security? Why do I need three different data points to get into a building in this, in this university? I see the same thing here. We see very, very impressive security systems being put around this facility. Marijuana is the single most sought-after illicit drug in the United States. It is more legal drug dealers sell it, more, it is used illegally by more than any other drug in the United States. It's highly sought after, and there's money to be made in the sale of this drug. I'm concerned that those who grow this will at some point succumb to the temptation to themselves profit from helping those who want to sell it illegally. I'm concerned that the promises made today of security and safety may wane when profits wane, if that ever happens, as time passes. I'm concerned that Simsbury Police will spend an inordinate amount of time focusing, if not tomorrow, when, if this were to pass, when the great security systems are in place, but years from now, when perhaps those systems aren't what they are initially. So I'm very concerned about this. I, last time we had a discussion, but this, someone, someone made a comment kind of in jest about Ensign Bigford and the fact that, well, we can, you know, in this town, we have Ensign Bigford, and they blow things up, and, you know, we certainly, if we can deal with that, we can deal with this. Well, that, Ensign Bigford is part of the history of Simsbury, and we've dealt with it as, as we needed to, but this does not need to be part of Simsbury, it just needs to be part of the history of Simsbury. And we, as commissioners for zoning, have an obligation to preserve the character of this town. And I think allowing for the production in this large scale of the single most sought-after illicit drug in the United States would do serious harm to the town, to its reputation, and to those who own property in this town. So I'm very much against this application.
Thank you. So I have a motion and a second.
I think Will's comments are, are important, but this is really almost a sealed operation that I, I just think the protections that have been built into the production here, it's almost like a semiconductor lasered out operation that was there before, and nobody knew it was there. And I think in, in truth, except for the people knowing what's there, there's no reason to, to be fearful of, of what's going on there. And so I think I'm in favor of it.
I'll, I'll just point out that it is actually legal in the state of Connecticut on these provisions. What the applicant is undertaking to do is within the law, not affecting, not to detract from your strong feelings. I respect this. So I, I would call for a vote. All in favor of the special exception, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
So we have one, two, four to two, so we'll tap. All right.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very, very much for your presentation. All right, discussion. We going to talk about the Webster Building, Hiram, or we going to, does that get tabled?
Mr. Chairman, six ninety Houghton Street has to be put off for the January meeting so they can continue to refine its plans.
So that brings us to the possible Powder Forest P A D. You guys don't want to hear about the Powder Forest P A D? So, just hang on one sec, let Hiram.
We brought the boards if you want them set up just so you can look at them.
The slides?
We don't have that kind of technology. We don't have that budget.
So we, I guess I'll sort of tee this up. We had an informal presentation by these gentlemen two weeks ago. I think we had some sort of initial reactions, and we were all challenged to think about this and to sort of provide lists of questions or concerns. Hiram, Hiram, were there any of those expressed or issued?
There were a couple of comments with regard to potential description of the traffic, potential traffic impact. Some of those were addressed a little bit during the presentation, but I think that that's a, a point that the public, as well as the commission, is going to want to hear about going forward in the future. So I would suggest that it's a part of the application that the applicant needs to, to focus on a little bit. One of the other things that came up, and this was a comment made by some of the commissioners in the past and other P A Ds, is that the design of some of the buildings fits a little bit behind the approval process. The way the regulation is written is that the commission has a little bit of flexibility about asking, either through the design review board or its own discussions, a little bit more information about the design. That's in no way to say that the, this applicant hasn't done a great job with designing things in the past, but I think that the commission, in order to be sure that you don't get put yourself in a situation where you've approved something and later on it turns out that it really wasn't what you thought you approved, probably will need to ask for a bit more design than it normally does with some of these applications. So between the design and the traffic, those are the two comments that I heard, Mr. Chairman.
I would say specifically, as it relates to the apartment complex, that there was a strong desire not to have fifteen buildings that all look exactly alike. And I think we use the word cookie cutter, that if, if there are that many buildings, maybe three different appearances rotated or turned or intermixed. So, and, and that is the difficulty with the P A D. We, we talked about this two weeks ago, which is cart before the horse. You guys want to know that we're going to be okay with the general idea, and yet, you know, we, we found ourselves a little bit trapped because the, the buildings had already been approved, and then this is at a completely different site where we ended up saying, well, yeah, they're, they all look alike. We didn't really, you know, the design review wasn't crazy about it, and we weren't crazy about it, but we approved it. So we want to be careful about that. I think there were also, so I, I would say generally, I'll speak for myself. I was favorably disposed to the, the, both the assisted living facility and the residential layout with that caveat, that if we have some flexibility working with you as you actually finalize the designs, that that would be good. There were some concerns about how sort of totally flexible we need to be on the streetscape front parcel, that, you know, I, I think that's the right kind of use, some sort of mixed use between retail, office, restaurant. Was there residential in that area, too? No, just all a sort of business office.
Or commercial.
Right. But again, the buildings, I, that's not here, you don't have that board. But you, guys, you brought your board, so you didn't, okay, Anna, you're bringing it. Okay, so, you know, I, I guess what we, we'd like you to think about, how, how much flexibility needs to be put into that, but that generally speaking, I think the three uses on the three parcels, from my perspective, seemed right. Okay? So I'll let anybody else comment.
Did you have a comment about the school impact, Hiram? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, there, there was a, a potential with regard to what the impact would be with regard to schools. I think that, I think that the applicant made the comment that most of these would be one- and-two bedroom units, and, and that probably is something that needs to be looked at during the, during the review process as well. I would agree with Rick on that. I'm sorry. One of the other things, too, that the, the commission did recently was to try to have the design review board work a little bit more closely with the commission, and one way to do that is meeting the same night. So that I think that the connection between the design review board comments goes back to the design comment I made before, and how these applications will go forward in the future might be a little bit tighter. I think that, that may help, help smooth this process as well. So those are two more things that you want.
So if, I mean, if you have other comments to give to these gentlemen before they make the formal application, this is the time. I, I had asked about the school system, and I think, I can't remember if I asked it in the last meeting. Now you've got some working knowledge over off of West Street.
Could this be attractive?
Yeah, sure, yeah, yeah. Because, you know, because you have similar type structures. You've got rentals, you've got people buying, and how's that shaking out with kids going to school?
We're seeing about one for ten.
One for ten.
So, for example, we have a, a high school student that's going to be going off to college. Parents are there in the rental unit, and before you know it, they're going to be moved on. But it's about one for ten. So in eighty, we project in eighty-eight units, there might be eight to nine students in the, in the school system. We did poll, Gus was able to get a, a school report that just came out, I guess, and it's showing dramatically decreasing enrollment. Something that, you know, as a Board of Education member from Farmington, I, I study these every year, and this is precipitous drop off. So it's, it's one of these things where I think we, you know, Hiram and I, in our meetings, we've talked about, you know, there's, there's declining enrollment, then there's dramatically declining enrollment, and in some cases, you might study that and say, we need to encourage more family housing, or this town is going to slowly age out.
And what's the interaction with the, with the Board of Ed or the town in that respect? There's so, seems like there's so much going.
picture of the town and its plan of development and how we're going as a town. So in our case, I kind of mentioned the one for 10, because in the event we end up with somewhere in that 200, you know, to 230, 240, 250 range, you might see 25 students. Well, that's about one classroom, yet in the district, it looks like you're down about 12 classrooms in population in just the last handful of years. So it's one of these things where, you know, if it were the other way around, and it was continually increasing, and you're looking at adding on to schools or building a new one, and then someone came in with, well, we want to change from commercial industrial to residential, even one for 10 could be an issue. But I think in this case, we're finding that the opposite is true.
It's true, though, and Hiram and I were actually talking about this today, that we have to be aware of all of the housing units that we've approved. And we approved apartment complexes in the north end of town, go back to John Rissin's place, your place, and the single-family homes that you're building, you know, over in Powder Forest as well.
In Mike Tredge's.
Yeah. So when you add it all up, I mean, it is a lot of new housing stock sort of over the next three to five years. It probably doesn't make up 500 students, because that would imply 5,000 people.
It does guide us with respect to our target is not family housing.
Right.
But not to preclude families.
What were you projecting, I'm sorry, for the single-family homes in Powder Forest? What do you call that development? I'm sorry.
Carson Way.
Carson Way.
In that, I quite...
It's higher than one in 10, though.
Yeah.
Double? Two in 10?
If that. It's hard to, it's really, that's too hard to tell. Because, for example, right now on our prospect list, we just started taking names, and most of the names, vast majority are looking for first-floor living. Yeah. So they might have been buyers for Powder Forest homes if it had continued as it was, but now they're more ready to buy. And we see this over time, that sometimes people have to look at it seven, eight, 10 times over a five-year period before they're actually ready to make a move. So I think we're gonna find a large percentage of first-floor living move downs in Carson Way. So it's the, you know, the jury's out on how that's gonna shape it.
Price point, though, may make a difference. Because I understand if you, if these are less expensive units, then that may attract younger families, not retirees as much perhaps.
Carson Way or?
These apartments.
East Town Home? Well, the apartments, they're still gonna be in the, let's say, $1,200 to $2,200 a month range. Definitely affordable in relation to the median income here in Simsbury. If you look at the CHFA standards, we might be as low as 70, 80% of CHFA, what we're looking for.
Median income is all conscious.
What's that?
Median income is all conscious, it's not for young people.
You know, we also...
You gotta move out.
Yeah. Don't let them...
We laugh, we laugh about that.
You know, you talk about the age of the future residents, and that's something that we in our marketing and design people are actually talking about, because in some ways, we'd really like to bring some 20 to 30, 35-year-olds into the community and try to bring them back out of the urban settings to put them back into the fabric of the community. So in some ways, we'd like to hit that market.
We had a marathon six-hour meeting today with our marketing people and our designers, and if I may, on the site development map, the concept, we mentioned this during our last meeting, is that these buildings down here, we're looking to evolve more towards workforce housing, smaller size, lower price point. And some of that came out of, you know, 20 years of watching Simsbury and the price of housing go stay up in large homes, big houses, and companies like the Hartford continually asking, well, where's the workforce housing? So we very much would like to take this in that direction, and so today we were looking at, you know, 600 square foot studios, a little edgy, a little more exciting inside, and that would attract those younger workers. And so when we went to the Hartford, I think Andy and I and Gus were there at one of the, not the Hartford, it was at the, it was here, wasn't it?
No, oh, well, the media's here.
Yeah, the Brown Data session. And there's a lot of discussion about, you know, we need places for the younger workers to come back and not the big old McMansions that they can't afford anyway. So this, you know, seems like a great place to do a true transition from the single-family detached to the attached, for sale, to the mid-level, and then to the more affordable product down here. So hitting a lot of different points in the market.
And then further, hitting the retail right on Hot Meadow. I mean, that's the goal, and that's the way people want to live now, you know, it's just a transition. Ideally, you know, even if the single-family homes were part of your development, that's the way you would probably develop it.
It's all a feeder. Exactly. We're going from least dense to most dense as we get to Hot Meadow. And there's a sidewalk system already in place, and to feed everybody there and have some convenience-type retail, restaurant, doctor's office, whatever, I think that, you know, these rooftops and this demand is gonna drive that corner. So I think as we move forward and E B Realty makes that site ready for development, I think it's gonna open the door.
Is it putting the cart before the horse to do the retail earlier in the process? That was the last phase, right? Is that, I don't know enough about what you guys do, but does that just not make fiscal sense to do that?
It's, wow.
It's a big gamble, I'm sure.
It's hard, and it's a cart before the chicken.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, on the retail, just as a reminder, we're coming in for subdivisions to separate three from four so we can do the assisted living. We also got the approval to take out the materials off of three, because we've got that hill. So we've got about two years' worth of taking materials out, fixing the site, making it, you know, marketable so that other people will use it. The other thing to mention, because you started off by saying the design and the timing were issues, and we can't tell you exactly what will be on that corner, but what we can do is come up with some concepts of what would be acceptable to us. We did this in Avon where we did a master plan down there for the whole town center, and we couldn't say, well, this building's gonna look exactly like this. But we could give design criteria and show respective sketches to give you a flavor of what it is we're talking about.
I think that'd be really helpful.
That's what we were thinking, because, you know, when you talk about a phased development, it gets to the point where, well, what's it gonna look like? Well, we can give you concept-wise and say, this is acceptable to us.
Well, then you give us context when you come back and say, well, it doesn't need to, it can't be this, but it can be that. And they say, all right, as long as it's along the guidelines of those things, it'll be fine.
And that was really our objective, so.
And I think along the same lines, I mean, in terms of what's going on in Avon, I don't know the specific details, but we want to keep Simsbury relevant. It's in competitive. And I think, you know, to your point, Ron, there's been a, there's an aging stock of homes in Simsbury, and we kind of want to, people live differently today than they did 40, 50, 60 years ago, and they're modern efficiencies. We just kind of keep that in mind as we make decisions.
Okay, so that...
You're the first on the panel. It's supposed to be a multi-use concept here, and really what you have is four separate neighborhoods. And I'm just wondering, is there not an opportunity to do more integration in them? I mean, they're so distinct, and, you know, and it also leans towards the cookie cutter look. And is there a way to even put some residential nearer to the retail? I mean, that's the concept of a multi-use, is that they actually get mixed rather than being four different products. You know more about it from a marketing standpoint.
Yeah, well, it's a great point, because that's, you know, when the town center charrettes all happened, and that created a knowledge base that kind of led to the P A D. And in a town center, all these things are focused like a laser beam right into like one pod, and you go up with your different uses instead of out. Here, we're still in kind of a semi-suburban office park setting, where the land is kind of stretched out, and in order to kind of make it work from a neighborhood acceptability standard, you know, we've got people up here that are going to want adjacent uses to kind of be compatible to them. So that's why we kind of brought it down, and then when we get down to where the office buildings existing are and where this assisted living building is going to be, because it's going to be sizable, we now have compatible uses around it. So it's kind of a long way of saying that, you know, from our perspective, we're one piece of the puzzle. We're this piece. And this piece, we know how to do this, and we can do it well, and it's compartmentalized, so from a financing and a construction standpoint, it's very straightforward and easy for us to accomplish. If we started mixing all kinds of things into it, it gets a lot more complicated, especially in a suburban setting. So it's kind of a long way of saying, we've got a lot of land to work with here. If we keep these transitions and we feed to the commercial, it works out best from our perspective.
Okay, go a step further in that, too, because if we also intended that Weetaw Village Center charrette, if you want to call it that, and with our traffic light right there at Powder Forest Drive and Route 10, and if the village, the Weetaw Village Center gets extended north, further up, that would be a natural town center concept that we understood the town was looking for, from a village center standpoint. So even though there's different components, it all kind of blends together, which will be a nice project, you know, over time.
West Hartford Center, I mentioned this in a couple of different meetings, I might have brought it up last time, because, you know, West Hartford Center is kind of, you know, the perfect example of how a town center can kind of be vibrant. It had its ups and downs for a while. The shoe store is gone, but you know what? It's still a town center. And when you look at the concentric circles around it, you see things like this, where you have the very dense town center itself, then right outside the town center but walkable, you have higher density residential, there's some town home condo communities around it, and you've got single-family, heavy dense, you know, grid-like, and it all filters into the middle. So similarly here, we've got all the density around it filtering all down to that Weetaw traffic light and E B's, you know, future development. How that might look, who knows? It could be that three years from now, you're actually ready to go, and you've got density created, and there might be some kind of a mixture in there. It's possible, but...
And one of the things that we talked to staff members with the applicant, who I already told, we talked a lot about connections, concentration of connections between the existing properties, some existing properties may be in property, tennis court, their variety of walkability things that we talked about as well, to try to bring some of those elements together that Kevin was talking about. So that's something I suspect they're working on, but that was important to us as well.
Yep. We wanted to bring a pathway down here to get, lead up with the bike lane along Stratton to get you to the rails-to-trails, interconnecting to, say, the restaurant would make sense for everybody, so if you lived there, you could walk to have brunch. So we absolutely will be looking at more of those interconnections. Okay? Thank you very much.
I continue to be concerned about the amount of traffic that's been generated here. And has there been any consideration of putting the entrances out onto Stratton Brook rather than, you're just adding two more lights to everyone there and get out of town by having to come out on this road?
Right now, you know, I'll speak to our piece of it, because it's probably the highest density as far as traffic is concerned. And we come out here and here, and you can either go this way to Stratton, you know, so if you're heading, say, to Avon or Unionville, you're gonna come out, come this way, right, and then left at the light. If you're going this way, you might go that way if you live closer and you want to get on this way, or you might go around. So it's just, my point is just, we have, you know, one, two, three, there's a variety of ways to get out of the property. And that's, you know, the traffic engineers are gonna have to prove it to all of us. They're gonna have to get in there, and they're gonna have, you know how it works, it's like, well...
We know that they are all hired guns, we'll tell you everyone here.
Yeah, but they're all operating from the same mathematical premise. And, you know, that's something that...
That's because they don't have to drive to Weetaw at 7:15 or...
Well, they avoid it, so they go the other way around. But we'll do the best job we can.
When Cogro did their thing in the north end of town, which they never did, haven't run yet, they're required to put in traffic lights that we are dealing with today, even though that didn't happen. And I'm just wondering if part of this approval would be that you guys come up with a fix for that traffic situation we have in Weetaw.
A tunnel.
Well, I can tell you, I talked to Foson O'Neill, who's our traffic engineer, they also did the CROG study on Route 10 a couple of years ago, and basically there's some, you know, some longstanding issues with, you know, the inadequate bridge, that the state wanted to make some improvements and the town chose not to accept them. And the state has a plan with this CROG plan, but it's kind of a long-term, you know, something that's gonna play out over the next 20 years to fix some of those issues. And there's probably nothing we can do, you know, immediately to fix the problem, because it's a longstanding statewide issue that, you know, Route 10 should be wider, the bridge should be wider, that's the only way to solve it. Some of the, we took a quick look at our uses and the traffic from it, and just conceptually, you know, our first property on the corner, when it's commercial, same number of traffic, same number of cars, the only thing is when you switch from an office to a general commercial use, where it could be restaurants, which generally go a little bit later at night, or commercial retail, which starts at 10 o'clock, probably the same number of cars in and out, but you spread the hours out, and generally, because it's not an office, everybody isn't at the peak AM hour at, you know, you gotta be at work at 8 o'clock. So same number of cars, but they're spread out for the day a little more. On the assisted living facility, the parking numbers and the traffic numbers go way down, because, you know, you might have 40 people on a shift as opposed to, you know, 300 or 400 cars. And in, you know, on Ron's project, when you switch from like an office where there's big peaks, AM and PM peaks, AM happens to be the bigger problem in Simsbury. You know, on residential, people don't have to be at work at 8 o'clock, so they leave from, you know, pick whatever, depending on where they're going, they leave at 7 to 8:30 in the morning. So, yeah, there's, they're gonna be adding to the traffic, but generally significantly less than if it was an office. We just, we did a quick calculation using the I T E numbers, and we're, where we had originally planned offices, we're gonna use about 43% less traffic at the peak hours. So just by what we're adding. So what we're proposing is less traffic, it would be a little more sensitive, but, you know, there are longstanding issues that the state's gonna have to work on.
I think we have to anticipate there being less traffic in a couple of years on Route 10. And I'm not being facetious, I'm serious. So what I'd like to really know is where you make the left turn, well, if you're coming south on 10 towards 185, you're making that left-hand turn, presumably people are going over the mountain to Hartford or wherever. I'd like to really see how many of those cars are actually going through that light to get to the Hartford or get to 44, and where that's gonna change, because that will be your determination of the decrease in traffic likely. I don't know if you could track them into the Hartford property per se, but I think we should anticipate less traffic. And Ned, you know, lights create walkability, right?
I guess what I'm saying is when you do your traffic study, I'd like you to include more than the entrance at the end of the Powder Forest Drive, or, you know, that it's all part of the bigger study, and I think you really, to be fair, you have to look at the other three lights, and how you're gonna affect you.
This is part of the Powder Forest original master plan S T C permit, so we are going to have to look outside of our little envelope.
Yeah, when we go in for S T C approval, the S T C looks at the surrounding traffic lights.
And we will, we will look at that, and Foson O'Neill, who did the corridor study, has all the background data up and down Route 10, so we'll be able to blend the two together.
I also think it'd be a crime to put a light on Stratton, Stratton Brook Road. Driving through that...
Coming out of...
No, just anywhere along, either whether it be where your property is or anywhere else on Stratton Brook, up the bushy hills.
There would never be the warrants down here for a light, so I think we can all assume that, but we'll find out.
Is that actionable enough for you guys? Good? Feel good?
That's great. And let me just assure you that with respect to any process moving forward, we will continue to work with design review board. I think the last time around, it worked out quite well. We went back and forth several meetings... meetings with them, refining the concept of work coming to this commission. So we'll be happy to do that, do combined meetings. And also as far as in the future, you know, conceptual master plan, conceptual drawings, the next step is an actual site plan, which will have actual drawings attached to it. If those actual drawings for any reason would have to change, it would be part of the approval to have to come back with that. So, you're very conscious of that, any, any securities you'd want to put into the process to handle this to it, give me a bite.
Right.
And from a development perspective, Ron's group is under, Land Works is under contract, the assisted living is also under contract, so we are moving forward, and we're very excited about site people, you've got to get that material out of there, so.
Okay.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. All right. Before I take your motion, I have, I have just a couple of housekeeping things. Hiram mentioned it already. A lot of thank Dave and Derek for coming, we had the first DRB meeting last Tuesday, it's a really good group. I'm pleased that Jen Murnay stepped up to be chairman, volunteered with...
Spotting.
And John Carroll's the secretary. I think the big thing, really important, is we, with their cooperation, their meeting's still 5:30 on Mondays before our meetings. So, just a heads up, that behooves us, if we can, to come to as many of their meetings, you know, if you have time, you're on your way into town, you can do it. Two, when possible, we're going to do informal presentations at 6:30 those nights, so, you know, after their meeting, before ours, so we'll start a little earlier, and that way the presenters only have to go once, so.
They could probably also stick around and give us a, more than just a sheet of paper saying why they approved or not.
Well, I think that is exactly where we're headed, is the interaction and just understanding each other's perspective, you know, by, by knowing the people and interacting with them, I think should, should really help. So that, watch for that, they will be at, their first meeting on that schedule starts with the January 16 meeting, all right? I just, reading the minutes, Kevin abstained from one of the votes last week, and I just want to, we probably should re-send around sort of the, the operating rules for the zoning commission, it's been a while since we've had those. But the rule is, if you are, somehow have an interest in the property, or you feel like you shouldn't participate, you should recuse yourself before the discussion starts and, and leave the room. That's a better practice. I made the same mistake the first time, I listened to the whole thing, said I can't vote on this because I'm an abiding, you know, it's just, that's, that's best practice. And then the last thing was to talk before the meeting about trying to be sure you get to the website, to get the packet, look at the stuff before the meeting, because there's a lot of really good stuff there. We had asked in the past to have these, that length sent to our regular emails as well as the town emails, there's, seems to be resistance on Kerry's part because of Freedom and Information Act to do that. They were doing that for a while, Hiram, so...
I added them frankly, if I, if I know that you did it, I think some at two or three places. If you want to do that, that's fine, just be aware that if we ever get...
Because that's just a reminder, boy, that meeting's coming up, and so if you can do that, that, that is helpful to everybody. We're all busy and doing other stuff, but that'll just send us to the website on a regular basis, okay? That's really all I've got.
One quick thing, I gave you a copy too of the code enforcement officer's December memo.
Right.
Take a look at that, if you have a question, he's doing a great job, so.
Good. Good. All right.
Move your chair.
Second. I'll favor say aye.
All right.
Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays.
Guys, Merry Christmas.
Good job, went way over the hour.
Funding for Simsbury Community Television is provided in part by contributions from viewers like you. Thank you.